Canyon City and a beautiful day for a regular city council meeting for April 18th, 2022. Can you please call the roll call, please?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember Brennan Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
We can't, we can't hear you, John, but we see you are present via Zoom, so.
And Mayor Ashley Smith?
Here. We will now have our invocation by Greg Swearingen from the Royal Gorge Vineyard Church. Can we all please rise?
Lord, we're just so grateful for this city, so thankful for all that's happening here, blessing us with the 150-year jubilee and everything went awesome and over 5,000 people showed up. We're just so grateful that you're smiling on the city. So we just continue to ask your blessing and your favor and for wisdom and discernment for the council members here and your continual grace. Amen.
Amen. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the beginning of every city council meeting, we reserve a time if anyone would like to address the council on any subject that is not on the agenda. Based on who's in the audience, I have a feeling you're here for something on the agenda, but if there is something that someone would like to say, now's the time to do it. Seeing none, we'll move on to council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. A couple of things. The regular monthly meeting of the Community Advisory Group for the Cotter Uranium Mill Superfund Site is tomorrow evening, 6:00 PM. We're continuing at this point in time to meet only by Zoom. If you would like information about that meeting, the public is welcome and encouraged to attend, and council members too. But just send me an email or contact me, however, if you would like more information about how to connect to that Zoom. And then I'll also say, although maybe John Hamrick is planning to say this, that we do have a Vision Committee meeting here Wednesday evening at 5:00 PM, at which time we'll get a report from the city's Energy Advisory Committee, kind of an update on the work that that committee has been doing for the city. And John can add if he has something more.
Thank you, Emily. Ryan, I was going to mention about the DCI conference this last week, but wondered if you wanted to fill us in. I wanted to name all the community members that came up special to help with our Challenge Studio, but I don't think I can wing that. Can you?
Yeah, we participated in downtown Colorado Inc.'s annual conference in Colorado Springs last week, and we had several folks who came up. We were a challenge community over the last couple of years, so working with DCI on specific challenges that face our downtown. And we had several community members that came up and assisted with some of that discussion. Beth Ketchmar and Scott Thorson, Cooper Trey Hearn, and Rich Mallard all came up to participate in that particular Challenge Studio. And it was a great conference. We got a lot of great things out of it. And I was going to talk about this during the Administrator's Report, but we also had a project that won the Governor's Award for Best Place in a Small Town, and that was the revitalization of the Fremont National Bank Building by TSAC Heavy Equipment. So that's certainly a great accomplishment. And the last Governor's Award that we had that won is actually in the audience, which was for the Blossom Parade in 2019.
Awesome. And then Councilmember Schmisher was there, and I as well, and Rick Harmon from the staff. And it really was an excellent week of education and learning and figuring out ways and solutions for helping our downtown become vibrant. So I'll thank your presence as well and the support. It was said during our Challenge Studio by one of the participants that never before had they seen so much support from the city governance themselves. And we showed up pretty with a strong suit of collaboration and desire to really work together to make downtown as vibrant as we can. So I know I took tons of notes and I'm excited to share some of those things with council. Also, as an announcement, we have for the 150th commissioned three murals to be done on Main Street. One of those started today on 8th and Main at the Gift Chateau. There's another artist coming from out of town tomorrow to come look at the building that they're going to be painting. That's Third and Main at the Yarned and Dangerous. So things are coming along really well there. And also at the DCI Conference, we had a public art tour that gave me all kinds of more ideas for public art that we might actually be able to afford to do. So it was super fun to see that happening. Is there any other announcements from council? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move forward to recognitions and proclamations. I'd like to have our Blossom Festival Court come on up, please.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council. I'm Cassie Groh. I'm the president of the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Corporation. We are here tonight to extend our most sincere thanks on behalf of the Blossom Committee to you, members of council, all of the department heads and city staff for all of the ongoing support and cooperation everyone provides each year for our community festival. 2022 has been an exciting year, and in honor of the city's sesquicentennial, this year's festival theme is "The Adventure Continues." Thank you all from the bottom of our hearts for supporting our festival for more than 84 years and helping make this time-honored tradition a success. We also wanted to take the time tonight to introduce this year's royal court and allow these amazing young women to talk about our festival lineup this year. And we'd love to get a group picture with all of you and our beautiful royal court as soon as they're done. So I'm going to start off by introducing to you all our Miss Personality this year, Alyssa Merlino.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Merlino, and I am the 2022 Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival's Miss Personality. This year, as the city of Canyon City celebrates its sesquicentennial, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival is celebrating its 84th anniversary. This festival has consistently been the longest-running and the best event in our city's history. Rain or shine, the festival is always held during the first full weekend of May. This year's Blossom festivities kick off on Wednesday, May 4th, when the Rites and Musements Giant Carnival opens on Elm Avenue between South 9th Street and Oak Creek Grade Road. Wristbands are $35. Wednesday is also canned food night at the carnival. Bring two cans of food and receive $10 off your wristband. All cans of food will be donated to our local loaves and fishes. Thursday, May 5th, the carnival is open from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and is family night. Carnival goers can purchase four wristbands for $100 with their coupon. People must bring the coupon to get the discount. The coupon can be printed from Blossom's website, Facebook page, and can be cut out of the shopper and daily record. On Friday, May 6th, the carnival opens at 3:00 PM and closes at midnight. Saturday's carnival hours are from 10:00 AM until midnight, and Sunday from 12:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Now, here is your 2022 Second Attendant Peyton John.
Good evening. My name is Peyton John, and I'm the 2022 Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Second Attendant. At its heart, the Blossom Festival is a community-run school band competition. The Blossom Festival provides nationally-recognized elementary, junior high, and high school bands the opportunity to compete at their highest levels. Just a few years ago, the festival began incorporating choirs into this competition as well. While the competitions are funded through the Blossom Committee, it is the Canyon City and Florence High School students who put on the work of running the competition. Dozens of student volunteers coordinate the multi-day competition. Concert orchestra band competitions will be held at Canyon City High School beginning Wednesday, May 4th, through Saturday, May 7th. Jazz band competitions will begin on Thursday, May 5th, through Saturday, May 7th, at Florence High School. The choir competition will be held at the Staples Event Center at Canyon City on Friday, May 6th, beginning at 9:00 AM. A full schedule can be found on our website at ccblossomfestival.com. Admission to the competitions is free and open to everyone. We encourage everyone to go and listen to all the talented competitors. Next, we'll be hearing from our First Attendant Anna Marie Drake.
Hi there. I'm Anna Marie Drake. I'm this year's First Attendant for the Music and Blossom Festival. The 18th Annual Run Blossom Races, organized and hosted by the Fremont Adventure Recreation, or FAR, kicks off on Saturday morning on May 7th at Centennial Park. For 18 years, the annual Run Blossom Races helped usher in the summer season in Canyon City. As the snow melts and leaves begin to adorn trees, runners of all ages come together to celebrate the Canyon Music Blossom Festival. The Run Blossom 5K event showcases the Arkansas River Walk Trail, running alongside the river and through some of the most scenic portions in the area. This year, event organizers have added a virtual option, allowing participants to join us virtually at their own pace on a day that works best for them. This year, as part of Canyon City's 150th celebration, runners are able to partake in a decades' outfit theme. Dress in your favorite decades clothing and come celebrate blossom while you run or walk the 5K. Also, on Saturday morning, Blossom in the Park opens at 9:00 AM. Blossom in the Park is our awesome craft fair and Kids Zone at Veterans Park, filled with fun, live entertainment, and great food. More than 100 vendors from across Colorado and many neighboring states will be selling creative gifts, custom jewelry, gourmet foods, and more. The Kids Zone area is a lot of fun with Big Ball and Entertainment, The Mermaid's Lagoon, and vendors with merchandise geared more for children. A full lineup of free entertainment is provided all day, Saturday and Sunday, at the Veterans Park stage. Blossoms in the Park entertainment will begin on Saturday, May 7th and 9:00 AM until 7:00 PM, and Sunday, May 8th, from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM. A full schedule of the entertainment can be found at ccblossomfestival.com. Thank you so much.
Each year, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Committee selects an individual, one individual, from our area who has made significant contributions to our community. However, in honor of this year's sesquicentennial, the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival is honored to have seven of our current and former mayors serve as this year's grand marshals to lead us down Main Street on Saturday of the festival. It'll be our 84th Annual Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival Parade. The parade will begin at 1:00 PM on Saturday, May 7th, traveling on Main Street between 3rd and 14th Street. The final parade lineup will be posted on the Canyon City Music and Blossom Festival website and Facebook page by Sunday, May 1st. It will also be published in the Canyon City Shopper and Daily Record during Blossom Week. This year, we're lucky to have 17 bands back with us, scheduled to march down the parade route. And of course, our many beautiful floats, including the 2022 Blossom Royalty float. Finally, the Blossom Festival's Cluster Duck will be held on Saturday, May 7th, in Macon Plaza. Cluster Duck offers a mix of live popular music from the 80s, 90s, and now. Live bands take the stage beginning at 5:00 PM with local favorite Six Bucks and a Flight, followed by the band Paramount from Kansas City. Cluster Duck is a high-energy show that promises to be fun for the whole family. The cover charge is only $5. So thank you all for letting us come and talk to you tonight about the festival. And again, we just thank all of you from the bottom of our hearts for your continued cooperation and support, because this festival cannot happen without all of you. So thank you very much. And now, if we can get a picture with these.
Yeah, no, thanks for being here and introducing the Blossom Festival. It sounds awesome. Thank you for your hard work and service. It is a big undertaking, and you do it every year again and again, and we so appreciate it.
You're welcome. That's what we're here for. Get on. So like we do in all pictures, all of us old people are in the back, and you cuties are in the front. I don't know who's taking the picture.
Oh, my God.
I was just lying in the other.
Would you pass, you know?
Yeah.
Push the button. Believe me. Oh? Now push the button right there.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Are you?
Oh, did you go? Is this your pen? Yep. Thank you. Thank you. We sure appreciate you guys. And next is somebody else that we really appreciate in our community, and I'd like to invite Pamela Sanders-Hamby, if you'd like to come and address the council. We are going to be reading a proclamation for Impaired Driving and Prevention Awareness Month. And before we read that proclamation, we'd love to hear from you about the passion behind this proclamation.
My daughter was killed by a drunk driver April 13th, four years ago. And so that's kind of been my passion, is bringing that awareness to Fremont County. And I have a walk every year. This one is April 30th at Veterans Park, starting at 8:30 to about 11:30 or 12:00.
And what day is that again?
April 30th.
April 30th. All right. Thank you for bringing awareness to our community and honoring your daughter's memory in such a beautiful way.
Thank you for the support.
For reading the proclamation, why don't we start on this side this time? Councilmember Tracy, if you don't mind, getting us started with the first whereas, and we'll work our way down.
This is a city proclamation from the Office of the Mayor regarding impaired driving prevention and awareness, April 2022. Shall I read that first, whereas?
Sure.
Whereas, in accordance with data shared by the United States Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, nearly 30 people die in vehicular crashes involving alcohol-impaired drivers each day, and?
Whereas impaired driving by alcohol, over-the-counter, or prescription medications, illicit drugs, or other substances is a public health threat to the citizens of Canyon City, Colorado, and it has and continues to have devastating life-altering consequences, and?
Whereas, in the year 2021, there were a total of 29 DUI arrests made in 14 DUI-related crashes in Canyon City, Colorado, and?
Whereas, we are committed to reducing the number of impaired driving-related crashes in Canyon City, Colorado, by supporting available resources and education for educators, healthcare facilities, public healthcare departments, and law enforcement agencies to keep staff educated and keep our community safe, and?
Now, therefore, I, Ashley Smith, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 2022 as impaired driving prevention and awareness, and urge the residents of our community to support the work that is being done in impaired driving prevention and awareness throughout Canyon City and Fremont County.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Stein, did you have something you wanted to say?
I think it came on.
Oh, it just came on? Okay.
It popped on, sorry.
Same for you, Councilmember Schmisher. All right. Thank you again for bringing awareness to our community, and wish you the best of luck in your walk coming up on April 30th.
Thank you.
And next, we have another proclamation, and this is on the National Arbor Day, April 29th, 2022. I do not see Rex Stevens or Rex Brady in the audience today, but I know he's super passionate about National Arbor Day and taking care of our urban forest here in Canyon City. And let's go ahead and read this proclamation. This time, we will start with you, Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Office of the Mayor proclamation for National Arbor Day, April 29th, 2022. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and?
Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and?
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and?
Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and?
Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and?
Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and?
Whereas trees are the source of joy and spiritual renewal, and?
Whereas the city of Canyon City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways.
Now, therefore, I, for Ashley Smith, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as National Arbor Day in the city of Canyon City, Colorado, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program, and efforts to care for our trees, whoops, and whoops, excuse me, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations dated this day, the 29th of April, 2022.
And I'll speak on that, just in Rex's absence. The 29th is actually Arbor Day. The city has been celebrating Arbor Day since 1980. So we have 42 consecutive years of participating in Arbor Day and being named a Tree City USA. And there will be an Arbor Day celebration, and that's Friday, the 29th, at City Hall, and that will take place at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. And no Rex also puts out vouchers every year for citizens to plant trees. I have a feeling this year there might be more with the 150th anniversary. And Ryan, can you go ahead and get us going on our consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and members of council, item 8A is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting for April 4th and the general government meeting for April 6th. 8B declares surplus and donate bicycles gathered by the police department. 8C is water service contract for 1623 Park Avenue. 8D is cash disbursements and P-card disbursements, and 8E is the monthly budget summary for February of 2022.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Minister Stevens, I had a question with regard to 8D. Could you please share a little bit more about the reimbursement of interview expenses with regard to the Main Street Program Manager position?
Yeah, we had a candidate that came from outside of the area, and we reimbursed travel expenses for that candidate.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I have a question on 8B in regard to the donation of bicycles, surplus bicycles. Just a couple of questions. The first page that says bikes for donation, there's just some text that's cut off. I don't know if it's anything essential for us to know, but about in the middle of that list of bikes for donations, it says bike was put in, and then we don't know what it says. So if someone knows what the rest of that sentence is, that'd be great. And then on the other list, bikes for trash, I just wondered what on that third bike looks like. Where it says it was for safekeeping, do we know any more detail about what that was and why now it's available to be trashed?
I do not know the answers, but thankfully, we've got Chief Schick here, and he may be able to answer those.
I'm not seeing what you're referring to on the bikes for donation.
Senator, bikes for trash.
Yeah.
It's the one that starts with Black Mon Goose 26-inch mountain bike. It's just a little bit past halfway down.
What's the third line?
I don't know. I can find out for you.
Okay. I just want, I want to be sure that we had full information on bikes that we're getting rid of and not having.
Absolutely. I can look into that. And the last page, I'm sorry, what was your question on the bikes for trash?
Yeah, the question on the bikes for trash list was just in regard to that third.
Oh, the safekeeping?
Yes, just, you know, what the circumstances were, making sure we're not throwing away something that...
I don't know the circumstances, but I can tell you, our policy is by statute to reach out to these people in certified mail at their last known address to make sure they're being notified that we have this property and we're going to dispose of.
Thanks.
Councilmember Tracy, on an email you had sent for answers from Ryan, I did know one of the answers. That was from the Fremont Center for the Arts. The dispersment for just over $1,000. Oh, remember, is that Amy's? Well, whoever's it was. Just for clarification for all, is that for the Fremont Center for the Arts, for the 150th, then and now art exhibit, we budgeted $2,000 for it, but they only spent just over $1,000, and so that's what they were reimbursed. Councilmember Dennehy?
The only thing I have, and maybe it's on here. I was just looking at, on 8C, and I was just, I guess I'm just wondering why, is it just because the city has hydraulic chairs that that is brought up? Because hydraulic ditch does not even run down Park Avenue.
I'm sorry, which section are you talking about in 8C?
8C? It's for the Gaffney property on 1623 Park. But hydraulic, at that point, it is only crooked ditch in Lincoln Park.
Well, it's a good thing there's no requirements.
That's right. I just wanted to, you know, just make sure that. I didn't know.
Yeah, there are certain circumstances when we provide these water taps where some properties need to bring water to the table, and it's preferred to be hydraulic ditch water.
Even though hydraulic isn't at that address. Understand? Okay.
We're going to get them water. Sometimes we need water back. Is that what that is?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there aren't any further questions, I had two minor amendments, one of which I would request Mayor Protem Hamrick's help with, with regard to edits to the minutes from the regular city council meeting for April 4th. The first of which is just moving, oh my goodness, moving the reference to Kindred Kids Child Advocacy Center Executive Director Lori Jenkins presented under the consent agenda. And then the second of which, Mayor Protem, I don't think that the motion necessarily captures exactly what you had sought to change in the lease amendment. So I'm not sure if you had further clarification that you would want to provide on that for the minutes.
So you're referring to the... See, I'm trying to get to where you're talking about there.
No worries. It's 8... No worries, it's um, 8A, page 3, um, just under the motion with regard to the amendment for the 1145 Suite A ground lease.
So yes, that, that, that amendment was to um, add a section to the um, to the lease that in effect removed the term radioactive materials from the definitions in the lease itself. And so that's what that, that um, motion was intended to do. And so it's, it's a little bit confusing, but, but it is, uh, I think, uh, you know, it does cover the ground. Um, adding a section in Section 28, removing the term radioactive materials.
Okay, wonderful. Then with that, um, if there aren't further questions, Madam Mayor, I would like to um, move that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment of changing the minutes to reflect when the Executive Director of the Kindred Kids Child Advocacy Center presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Um, I do see, um, Councilmember Tracy, that you had pressed your button, so did you have an additional question?
Just a, a question, I wasn't sure if I understood what you were suggesting about the change uh, as far as where the Executive Director of the Kindred Center were. Cause I, it read okay to me, so I wasn't sure what your change was.
Sure. So she actually spoke when we were discussing the consent agenda and not, um, and not when we actually were discuss, when we had later removed that from the consent agenda and, and addressed it separately.
So you're just talking about when she spoke?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sure. Any further discussion? I'll call a vote. Commissioner Schmisher?
Councilman.
Count, Councilman, sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, well, sorry. Here, or I. I'm sorry, I'm used to planning commission. Councilmember Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmembers Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Mayor Smith doesn't... No hope for me, but thank you, council and staff. Ryan, would you like to give a, a report for us, please?
Yes, uh, you have a written report uh, in your packets. Uh, there's some items that were, uh, didn't make the deadline for the interim report, or for the administrator report, so I wanted to cover those. Um, and a, a big shout out to Ivy Morris, our HR director, and uh, and the HR team, and Jim Johnson, who uh, does our, our loss prevention and, and sa, you know, is our safety officer. Uh, we had our SIRSAS audits, uh, we scored 107 out of 100. Um, and it's the, the best score that we've seen, at least in the last five years. Uh, so, um, you know, there, there's a lot of hard work. We also had some uh, great input from the, the PD, changing some of their processes as well. So uh, thank you to Tim, Commander Tim Walsh, uh, for the work he did on that. Um, so, uh, you know, it's a, it's a great accomplishment and very happy to, to be able to report that to council. Uh, the police are testing radios and getting quotes back for uh, new radios, so uh, that's, uh, that is moving along. Uh, we have the closing of 316 Macon later this week. That's the parking lot behind the New Method Laundry. Uh, we have seen, uh, we, we're starting to get some of those reports back on uh, the New Method Laundry building itself and, uh, you know, continuing to, to work with the state agencies on, uh, you know, what, what the remediation on, for that property may look like. Uh, we do not have that property under contract at this point, so uh, we're continuing to, to look at that. And uh, again, at DCI, there was, there was a lot of talk about brownfields and dry cleaners and things like that, and actually uh, got to meet with Mark Rudolph uh, from CDPHE and, and talk specifically about that property. So uh, we're continuing to monitor that, but we are able to move forward with the um, with the parking lot and did receive a, a letter from CDPHE, um, you know, giving us the, uh, a clear path to move forward with that property. Uh, one thing for the public, uh, we're, we're seeing um, this, the pedestrian crossing sign that happened uh, that we have over by the high school on College Avenue. Uh, that uh, sign continues to get hit, uh, and originally, we were thinking it was accidental. Uh, we have footage now to show that that's intentionally being run over. Uh, so uh, please keep an eye out for uh, that particular area on College Avenue. Uh, we're certainly looking for any information on that, and uh, we will continue to put the sign back up, so.
Well, there's a, quite a few just driving problems on, in that area around the high school anyways that I know Principal Summers would really like to see us address sooner than later. And, and there's just another example, I mean, these kids, we need to keep them safe. And, and I hate to think that, you know, sometimes some of those things happen, but I mean, sometimes there's acts, things escalate towards an accident where a student really does get hurt, and lives are ruined. And I'd rather take care of these little things now instead of waiting.
Yeah, and...
Part of that is speeding.
Yep, and as far as College Avenue goes, that, that is uh, one of the streets that we're looking at next year for 2A and uh, putting in some additional traffic measures to address some of the speeding down there. And then the last item I have, um, that is not in the agenda, uh, in your council calendars, we have a tentative date of June 1st for interviews of, of new council members, as well as uh, the Trails Committee. Um, wanted to check with council at this point to see if June 1st would work, or if there are other dates that uh, council would like to consider.
My only question is, since we're getting the applications in on May 6th, is it possible to maybe do that a little bit sooner, or maybe do it at the May 16th? Regular city council meeting, instead of waiting almost a whole nother month?
Yeah, um, you know, I, and Councilwoman Schmisher, I know you sat after a meeting. Uh, yeah, our, our goal was to try and, and uh, not have it on the same night as a meeting nights, uh, because those uh, interviews do run long sometimes. Um, we could certainly move it up a week, um, do that the week of... Uh, that would be the week of May 23rd.
I guess that's up to council, if they want to have a separate meeting for interviews, or if you just want to have a marathon meeting and just get it done. I mean, so we have some options for May 16th, or another suggestion of May 23rd? Councilmember Tracy?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on another issue too, but on this one, I, I'm really just not going to be available on June 1st. I'm flying to Chicago that day. And I would really like to be here for the interviews, the, either the night before or the week before, Monday or Tuesday night, the week before, you know, May 23rd, 24th, or I'm sure other dates would work. And, and either way would work for me. If we want to make one long night for the second meeting in May, that's good for me too, but June 1st just won't work.
Yeah, we definitely want to have everyone here that can be.
And I, I wanted to, if I could, just slip in a quick comment about the discussion a minute ago about pedestrian safety. Um, and this might be just something to work on in the future. We, I think we really need a big education campaign in the city, and not just on college, but downtown and a whole lot of other places in regard to the need for traffic to stop when there's someone in a pedestrian crossing. Uh, that's pretty, you know, I see that happen all the time, where people are stepping out on Main Street to cross, and cars don't stop for them, and so I, I just wanted to throw that in there. I think we have a real um, issue of safety all over town regarding pedestrian co, crosswalks.
Thank you, Councilmember Tracy. So, um, back to dates, any recommendations from council on what you'd prefer?
Personally, I prefer a night where we're all, all already here, um, just so we can, we already have that planned in our agendas and schedules.
If I'm gonna be gone from my family, might as well just be gone till late at night, instead of having an additional night away.
But I'm happy to have everyone...
I'm pretty open, so I can make anything work.
I'm good, it doesn't matter to me, uh, late nights fine.
So would May 16th? Is that within the deadline? I mean, after the deadline?
Yeah, you'll have uh, 10 days after the deadline. Um, the only caveat there is that I will not be present for that meeting.
Oh, so then you're gone. And when is the deadline for the applications, the 6th?
Uh, it's Friday, the 6th.
What about May 11th, on a Wednesday? Are you gone then too?
Yep. So the, the week of the 23rd would be the soonest that I can attend, but that, again, that's up to council. If you want to do it, that's absolutely up to you.
Does Ryan need to be there? He doesn't even get to vote.
Was it that bad if we moved it to 30th?
The 30th would be Memorial Day.
Yeah. That one's out for sure, yeah.
That, that was the other thing we were trying to plan around, was um, knowing the people
Okay.
Maybe gondering Memorial Day.
Ryan, as much as I would love to have you present...
That's okay.
I don't know if there's a whole lot there, but I don't know, is that bad? Should we just? Cause I mean, it's pretty important to get somebody into the seat, May 16th. I think you'll all still have an opportunity to review those applications.
Do we know how many we've received?
Yeah, no, no, he's gone, yeah, he's gone. That's all right.
Yeah, that, um, part, part of the reasoning for June 1st versus uh, May 16th is uh, regardless, the, the next time they wouldn't, they wouldn't be sworn in until June 6th. So we're, we're trying to get them, you know, those interviews done sometime before June 6th.
What if we did the interviews on June 6th?
The, the week of the 23rd doesn't work for folks? I missed on...
Well, the 23rd would be an additional meeting.
Right.
Are you back by the 23rd, though?
I can't do the 23rd.
You can't do the 23rd or the 24th? Okay. You can do the 25th?
25th?
I have a conflict on the 25th, I'm sorry.
Wow, it's gonna be hard, I mean...
Busy, busy council members.
What about May 31st?
There's an idea.
Day after.
Day after Mem, Memorial Day?
Tuesday, the 31st would work for me, it's the night before I fly out, so.
Okay. Sure, no, that's like the day after, that can be hard. All right, so can we table this part of that discussion for a little bit? And find that right date?
Well, we can send out a doodle poll or something.
Yep.
Yeah. It's the thing, when you have all these competent city council members are busy going about doing good and taking care of business in our community. All right. Anything else for Ryan for our um, report, any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
Um, I just, I had noticed in our last city council meeting that it, in, under planning and zoning, that it noted that we were waiting on our city attorney for um, a draft agreement for 1751's Forge Road. And I noted that again, in this uh, director's report or administrator's report, it notes the same. So I'm wondering if we can just get an update from our, our attorneys as to where that is and what the, the holdup is.
I would have to follow up with Catherine on that. Sorry.
We, we can get update um, later this week and get it out to city council.
Great, thanks. All right, sounds good. For ready to move on, I'm going to open a public hearing. This public hearing is item 10A, introduction and first reading by title only, ordinance 9, series of 2022, entitled An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Title 17 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning the addition thereto of new subsections I and J of Section 17.05.150 concerning temporary shelters. Ryan, are you the one giving the report on this?
I, I will be giving the report, and I will be reading Patrick's memo into record. Uh, going back several decades, the city municipal code prohibits camping in municipal parks and open space areas with only three noted exceptions, Red Canyon Park, Temple Canyon Park, and the Royal Gorge Park. It should be noted that all three of those exceptions to the camping prohibition are parks owned by the city of Canyon City, but not actually in the city limits. Notwithstanding these prohibitions, a coalition of community leaders have attempted to establish a camping area within the city limits for the purpose of creating a safe outdoor space to provide temporary shelters for the local homeless individuals. This coalition included elected officials with the city who have asked staff to explore creating a path to allow for temporary shelter SOS facilities. Uh, the attached draft ordinance creates standards for both temporary shelters and overnight shelters. Taking a step away from this memo, there have been instances in the past where uh, overnight shelters uh, have been needed as well, uh, specifically on extremely cold nights over the last couple of winters. So um, that is another important point. Uh, the ordinance defines both terms as follows. Overnight shelter is a facility set up to provide emergency shelter for people experiencing homelessness within an existing structure such as a church. As proposed, the overnight shelters come with an operational limitation of not more than six months of operation in any 12-month consecutive period or ti, of time. A temporary shelter or safe outdoor space is a managed outdoor space that offers both shelter and supportive services to people experiencing homelessness, with an operational limitation of being used not more than six months out of any 12 consecutive months. And these particular temporary uses can only be established in areas zoned general commercial or I light industrial. Also, as proposed, both outdoor shelter and temporary shelters are also required to submit plans to the city to demonstrate operational procedures. It should be noted that the overnight shelter requires a specific permitee or agency coalition of agencies who will manage the shelter and provide staffing. Uh, the temporary shelter SOS, on the other hand, assumes the operation of the shelter will likely be done by a public agency with no direct regular staffing on site other than for inspection purposes. Um, a, again, another editorial note there, as far as the overnight, or the temporary shelter SOS, uh, we do expect um, eight, other agencies and coalitions to apply as permities for that as well. Uh, this ordinance was modeled after similar ordinances created to solve similar issues in various communities along the front range of Colorado. This ordinance was noticed for public hearing uh, before the planning commission via a post to the city's website as per requirements of Section 17 dot 10 dot 0203D. Uh, planning commission did conduct a public hearing on the ordinance on February 23rd and continued the matter to its regular meeting on March 23rd, requesting staff review of some potential changes. Changes to Paragraph 4 concerning temporary outdoor shelter were made for reasons of practicality, and subparagrafts A and C, potable drinking water and hand washing stations were to be located within 1,000 feet rather than onsite. Additionally, additionally, subparagraph G in the original draft required electrical outlets within 1,000 feet were deleted as such a provision would likely require the use of extension cords posing liability and fire risk. Uh, in Paragraph 5 of the temporary outdoor shelters, subparagraph F concerned a requirement that a list of job retraining and education sites be situated within a half mile of the outdoor encampment. Uh, this requirement was deleted again for practicality. Two changes concerning Paragraph 4 of the overnight shelters were made. Both subparagrafts G and H concerning the dedicated electrical outlet for each bed space and internet connectivity for shelter occupants were deleted, as these would be difficult to implement. Uh, in both Section 2 and Section 3 of the draft ordinance, planning commission had asked for the duration of time for both temporary outdoor shelters and overnight shelters could run for 12 months. Upon consultation with the city attorney, this was deemed unwise. Uh, to allow a temporary use to exist for 12 months would make it permanent, requiring uh, modification to general commercial and light industrial zones. Uh, city attorney explained that the point of the ordinance was to create a mechanism by which the city would, could legally permit a use that was already occurring, and therefore not criminalize homelessness. Uh, the duration of both Sections 2 and 3 was however, increased from four months to six... The duration of both sections two and three was however increased from four months to six months. The bulk of planning commission's comments however dealt with the requirements that operation of either a temporary outdoor shelter or an overnight shelter would be required to submit a plan, detailing how the operation of the shelter would be maintained and how it would comply with the requirements specified in the ordinance. Planning commission's concerns involved the specifications such as an operation plan was going to have to meet, what criteria would be used to review and evaluate the operations plan, and how was an applicant to know what those criteria were before submitting the operations plan? And how was this compliance with the operations plan to be enforced? Staff explained that the criteria would be an administrative determination and would made available to local organizations as seeking to establish a shelter. Enforcement would be handled in the same way that violations of municipal code are handled currently. Any complaints or observed concern would be investigated by the police department or code enforcement. If a violation has occurred, compliance would be sought in the same way as other municipal violations. At the conclusion of the public hearing on March twenty-third, planning commission concurred with staff and city attorney's responses and voted to recommend approval of the temporary and outdoor shelters ordinance to council. I did attend that March twenty-third meeting with planning commission to answer a lot of those questions, just to go into a little bit more detail regarding those concerns and the administrative determinations. Part of the reason we don't want to put those criteria necessarily in the ordinance is because if there needs to be a change, it has to go back to city council to make those changes. This is, you know, very similar to administrative policies that we draft for other areas of the code and that, that is what we envision here is drafting administrative policy over what that plan would look like.
Thank you, Ryan. I'd like to turn some time over to Austin, our attorney.
Yeah, I just might want to get ahead of one issue there in the memo. And that you could absolutely craft an ordinance where you have a very similar structure here and it's for permanent uses. So there's no temporal element to it. You could absolutely do that. That's not what this ordinance does. So it has to have a temporal limitation if we're gonna call it a temporary use and treat it all, like all other temporary uses. Just to clarify that bit in the memo. Hopefully that brings a little bit of clarity to it.
So, Austin, there's another bit in the memo talking about not criminalizing homelessness. And can we expand a little bit about this being used as a tool? Because part of our conversations have been that it's necessary at times to ensure that there are enough beds for the homeless so that if we needed to evict somebody off of the Riverwalk, it is a Supreme Court ruling that we have to have a place that's legal for them to go. Can you expand on that?
That's correct. Our circuit, the case was out of Boise, which is in our circuit, established that it is cruel and unusual punishment, a violation of the Eighth Amendment, to prohibit someone from sleeping in a particular area within a municipal boundary without giving them an option of where to go. So you must have essentially a bed for them to sleep in that night in your municipal boundaries if you're going to say that they can't sleep in particular areas, including public spaces. So in Boise's case, it was a ban on all camping. They were evicting people from their parks and they did not have enough homeless shelter beds to house those people. That is a violation of the Eighth Amendment.
Is there anything else we need to be aware of when it comes to being in line with the Supreme Court rulings and the, and our national laws and state?
I think this ordinance will, it gets you there legally for sure. It would just depend on how you want to tweak it and we need to be really careful about making it less lenient and in which ways you're going to do that. I know that wasn't a great answer for you, but perhaps when you have particular questions, I'll do a better job.
Okay, sure. Ryan Stevens, do you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on the issue of, you know, why we chose six months and, you know, the idea is that it would cover the coldest months of the year. When we worked with the fire district to allow additional shelter space a couple winters ago, that was the biggest concern is making sure that there's those additional beds available during those colder months. And, and, you know, we, I know we have DeeDee Clement from Loaves and Fishes here, but that also seems to be the point where we see the lack of beds is during those colder months as well. During the summer, there seems to be more vacancies.
Do you have anything you want to add to that as for Chief Schick as this being a tool that you can use to address homelessness as a whole? And I'm, and I'm, I guess this is kind of a leading question because I know absolutely, I mean, I've already been getting comments from people that this, you know, we are taking care of the sacred homeless and we are doing so many things for them. They're coming in from all over the country to come to Canyon City. And this isn't necessarily a tool to protect the homeless on a sacred pedestal of being above and beyond normal human beings. And it's not a tool to bring people in from all over the country. It's actually a tool, I mean, one, to not have cruel and unusual punishment, to be within the bounds of the law, to have a bed that's a tool to use to address some of the unsavory parts of homelessness as well. I hope I'm leading this in well enough. I mean, we want them to have a place to go, but it's also if we have, let's say, some folks, we have this SOS temporary shelter, they can go there. They can, if we're asking them to leave the Riverwalk or behind Sherwin-Williams or at the Hogbacks, we have a place for you to go. Yes, there's rules you have to follow, but you have a place that you can go. And if they say, no, I don't want to go there, I prefer to be a punk at Veterans Park all day and all night, now there's a tool that we can have to use to address that. Is that making some sense?
Madam Mary, you make perfect sense. It absolutely is a tool and it's, and it's an essential tool. As Mr. Flanagan pointed out, we have to have some options. Jail is not the option. You know, when we deal with these folks out there, we have to be able to offer options. The case law, the precedent is very clear on that matter. We have to safeguard their property if we come into control of it. So safe open spaces is one of those options. Loaves and Fishes is one of those options. Rehab facilities is one of those options. So I know a lot of people would like to see this matter just go away, but it's not going away. And, and they are, they are here, they are coming, they're not being bussed in as many folks would have you in the community think. But they, they are displaced and in need of help. And I know that, you know, we see them in places that we'd rather not see them, but we have to have these options available to try and find them in appropriate shelter so that we can, we can solve community's ills and, and help them at the same time.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I'm Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks. I think some of my questions been addressed. First, I'll just say I do have some comments or questions in regard to the proposed ordinance itself, but I'll hold those until we get to that language. But just in general, I wondered if we, for my benefit and maybe some in the public, if we could just say explicitly, under what auspices the current shelter with Loaves and Fishes that they operate as a full-time, year-round shelter? Just to be clear that what we're talking about here is something to supplement that? Is, is that the best way to say that?
Well, I think I definitely want to invite DeeDee to come and talk about what's going on because there's changes happening at Loaves and Fishes and why there was even an SOS in the first place. I just wasn't sure with council, I know we have a kind of a list, a queue of council member questions. Would you prefer to hear from DeeDee first or would you like to ask your questions first?
I'd love to hear from her.
All right. So DeeDee, if you wouldn't mind coming on up, and it looks like you brought a guest with you too. If they'd like to come and address council as well, we'd be more than happy to have y'all. So there's two things. One, questions, you know, the growth at Loaves and Fishes. And then why did we try this SOS out? By the way, it was just an experiment, but even as an experiment, we needed to be legal in doing it. And where do you, how did, how's it gone? Where do you see it going? And then I think we have more questions for you after that.
Sure, sure. So let me first introduce John Gordon. John Gordon is a counselor over at Solvista Health and has been very much involved in the work that we've been doing at the SOS site, so. So Loaves and Fishes, as you all know, is the emergency shelter here for Fremont County. We used to have a seventeen-bed shelter and we are currently under construction to expand it to a thirty-eight-bed shelter. That construction should be completed by the end of this month. But when we started construction, we had to reduce our capacity to ten. And we knew that obviously there are more people experiencing homelessness than ten people. And on Labor Day weekend, we established an SOS site. At that time, there was a lot of camping that was happening behind the Department of Human Services and there wasn't really any oversight and it started really to get out of control. And so we worked with the Canyon City Police Department. We had a bunch of volunteers that came out and we asked all the campers that were on the Department of Human Services property. We said to them, we're gonna provide you a tent, but you need to move from this property. You are no longer able to stay here. And so at that, at that point, I believe there were eight tents that have gone up. Since we started this, we actually have had, I want to say about twenty-six individuals stay at the SOS site. Out of those twenty-six, I left my notes over there, but I want to say fourteen of them actually transitioned into housing. And so that's the goal of SOS sites. It's not an emergency shelter like Loaves and Fishes. It's not a permanent place where people can stay for months and months and months and months. It's designed to get people who are maybe sleeping in parks or sleeping illegally on someone's property and allows them a place to still stay outside. For many people, and John can probably speak to this even more or better than what I can, for many people going inside an emergency shelter is, they are just not ready to do that. And this safe outdoor space provides that interim place. And so what happens at the safe outdoor space is we work with Solvista Health, Department of Human Services, Council of Government, Loaves and Fishes, anyone who's willing to partner with, with us. Lots of local churches became involved and we build community with the individuals that are staying there. And what we saw, as I said, out of those twenty-some individuals, at least twelve of them transitioned into housing, which probably would not have happened because they aren't in a place long enough for us to connect with them, get them connected to services. But the other piece of it that happened is out of those twenty-some people, some of them actually transitioned into our emergency shelter. They never said that they would go there, but, but they built community. They knew that it was a safe place and they, and they trusted us and they trusted the people that they were working with to go into our shelter. So it just provides, again, I don't want to say, we've been, I said the word safe place a hundred times already, but again, it just provides that safe place where people can go and get support. There are rules, so it's not a free-for-all. You just can't do whatever you want, but the rules are limited. We know that because we don't want it to be huge barriers. We want people to come to the SOS sites, but there are some just general code of conduct rules that individuals need to follow. And so to Mayor Smith's point, it was, we learned a lot. I would say I would do it again. I wouldn't, I wouldn't not do it again because I know that there are people that I know that are living in housing today. I know that there are people in treatment today because service providers know where to find them and can go over there and talk to them and remind them to go to their appointments and things like that, so. But we learned a lot and so as we've progressed on this and, and if this ordinance is approved and if Loaves and Fishes submits an application, we can take what we've learned and just make it even a better and stronger SOS site. So I'm gonna let Mr. Gordon talk for a moment.
Should I set my three minutes?
No, you, you came at our request, so.
Thank you. The three minutes actually was, that was relaxing me.
Okay, yeah, okay, three minutes.
Gordon, I'm a case manager, not actually a counselor. DeeDee overrated me. I'm a case manager at Solvista Health and I work expressly with people with substance use disorders. I'm on that team at Solvista Health. And there are three case managers like myself and also a peer specialist. As DeeDee mentioned, one of the great advantages from a treatment standpoint was that we knew where people were. She also mentioned that it wasn't a free-for-all. As, as far as I know, everybody there signed a simple but clear contract of an intention to either be working or to be in treatment and seeking treatment services. And myself and other staff at Solvista, as well as a staff from DHS, a staff from Loaves and Fishes, and often usually DeeDee herself, we had a weekly appointment every Monday where we knew where to go. People there knew we were coming. It was one fifteen every Monday and we did that for months actually, and I would say on the whole, it was, we had good attendance from staff and we had good attendance from people living at the temporary site. And it was, it kept us accountable and it kept them accountable. You know, I guess what, what I would emphasize is that there's a Supreme Court ruling, which, which makes good sense that for people who have no other alternative, and there are unquestionably and will always be, I'm guessing, people who have no other alternative and as DeeDee said, aren't quite ready to be in the shelter. And quite honestly, because the shelter doesn't appropriately allow substance use, and there are people who aren't quite there yet. But I do want to mention, one person in particular who was homeless for years, well, at least as long as I've been working at Solvista for two years, but I think for a couple years prior to that, who had an addiction problem. And he and his wife accepted the contract and took a tent at that site. And in the last several weeks, I think probably close to a couple months, indications were, was becoming sober while he was living in that tent with his wife. And, and it's a mystery to me still why people, what causes addiction and what helps people recover. But one of the things that's likely is that his recovery was supported by regular contact with people coming over there, not only from a treatment perspective, but also keeping him accountable to probation. Besides probation appointments that we're reminding people of, we're scheduling them for treatment, we're facilitating medical appointments. We are, I should mention, there was also somebody from Solvista from our job services who made a point of coming there whenever someone on his caseload was living there. So that's, that's another thing that they, we were able to provide easy access to by knowing where they were having a regular appointment with them. And I suppose the last thing is, there was a woman today who was released from jail and I, as much as her public defender wanted her out of jail, I couldn't coordinate the bed date for treatment with the release from jail date. She wasn't out in time. The bed date I had, she wasn't released soon enough. So today she was released from jail while I'm still working on another bed date and I had nowhere for her to go. So it's unfortunate that, that moment that someone is being released and eager to go to treatment, eager for recovery. I can imagine that that moment of being released from jail was as frightening as it was freeing without knowing where she was gonna end up that night because she's coming out to no family, no resources. I don't work on Mondays, so I wasn't there. That's another consideration, as is obvious. There are people for whom there's no other alternative, and this is a very, very, very helpful and essential place to transition. Thanks for your time. Thanks for your consideration. I understand that there is pushback from people in the city. And so I appreciate it being considered.
Thanks. DeeDee, before we open up to questions, can you put in context for us as we're contemplating the future, this ordinance and its implication on our future of our community? With the expansion at Loaves and Fishes to 38 beds, do you feel like that's going to be sufficient for the need of beds to house our homeless? Or do you feel like we won't maybe not need SOS for a while? Or do you still see a need for an SOS?
I would say that there's still a need today for a safe outdoor space. As far as we know, I think I've shared with you in the past, I've talked to the council members about all the work that we've been doing with Built for Zero. And we actually, for those of you who are newer to council, we actually have a list of individuals who are experiencing homelessness in our community. And that's through a lot of collaboration with a lot of service providers, law enforcement. We work with BLM, Park and Rec. And on that list, there are 148 individuals. I feel pretty confident that that list probably represents 80% of the people experiencing homelessness in Fremont County. Most everyone on that list, or a large percentage of people on that list, I say are in the Canyon City area. I know that's a question I get asked, how many of them are actually in the Canyon City area? Most of them are here in the Canyon City. So our 38 beds is not going to provide beds for all of them. But what the goal is here for Fremont County and all of these service providers and faith community that are working together to end homelessness is our goal is to actually end chronic homelessness by the end of this year. And then once that's done, then we'll work on the next population. So that may be family, or that may be youth, or whatever. The team has yet to decide that. But we already ended veteran homelessness. We're working hard to end in chronic homelessness. So in my mind, I see that potentially, that 38, we could get to that point where it pretty much could cover everyone. That's my hope. That's my prayer. But as of today, it will not cover everyone.
All right. If you guys wouldn't mind staying up here so you're available for answering questions, we'll start with Councilmember Smith.
I just had kind of a comment for the public. This is one of multiple ordinances that we've passed in order to give some teeth to our law enforcement and everything that they do, as well as their partners. Homelessness is not a situation that we as council can solve by ourselves. We rely on our city staff, including our public safety. We rely on our other agencies such as Solvista, such as Loaves and Fishes. And this is just another tool for the toolbox, Ordinance 9, series of 2022. It's something we're basically already doing. We're just making it legal so we are not violating our own ordinance about camping. If that's something that I can help to let people understand what Ordinance 9 actually is doing, it's making us legal and our own ordinance on camping in city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stein.
Yes, I just have a couple of comments. They're not really questions. I do have a question for all of us here up on the stand up here. Have any of us ever been homeless? Have any of us ever been cold or hungry and not known how to address that? That's a question I just want you to think about, okay? And I just want for the benefit of the audience at home perhaps too, and those in the audience, I wanted to emphasize something that DeeDee says over and over again. The homeless, when we talk about "the homeless," it's not a tribe. These are people, individuals in our community. They're individuals who are temporarily experiencing homelessness. There's a whole range of why that's happening. We can't just say "the homeless this" or "the homeless that." And my constituents talk about that a lot too. I just want the people in the community to understand these are individuals. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is for you, Director Clements. I'm wondering if it will be proved problematic for the SOS or for temporary shelters to only have them be permitted for six months a year? I don't know kind of if that will impact your infrastructure, impact your staffing, if that will negatively impact what you're trying to do with the SOS. And I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit more about that.
So it is a lot of work to set up a safe outdoor space. We definitely understand the city's position about not making it a permanent site. Would we like for it to be longer? Yes. Instead of having to stop it and then start it again. But I think today, I'm just thrilled that we are having this conversation. And if we need to start with six months, then let's do six months and then see what happens from there. But ideally, it would be great if it didn't have a time limit.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm also just thinking about, you know, when snow normally happens here. And if it starts in October and can go to the beginning of May, six months doesn't seem to necessarily even capture those cold months that Administrator Stevens mentioned at the outset. So thank you for sharing that. I guess my one other question or comment was if we currently have 148 individuals on a list, and we think that that's about 80%, and we will only have 38 beds by the end of the month, seems like we are pretty far from reaching that district court order.
Circuit court.
That we need, you know, that we need to be.
Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess my question is kind of related to what Councilmember Schmisher just asked about the six-month limit. And I wanted to be sure first that I understood what you said earlier, and I may have not understood. For the SOS space as it was operated, or as it has been operated, am I understanding correctly that there wasn't a requirement that they not be using substances there? But in the Loaves and Fishes shelter, there is that requirement? And the reason I ask that is to just say, if we're only operating a space six months or up to six months out of a year where people with that issue can be, then we still are going to have a gap, I assume.
So at our emergency shelter, you're not allowed to drink alcohol or actually do drugs on-site. There are people who stay at our shelter who are under the influence of all of that. And sort of what our policy is, is we would rather take someone in our shelter who is under the influence and just put them to bed and let them sleep it off than for them to, than for us to turn them out, potentially get harmed by someone or do something stupid that's going to have lots of ramifications. So we will allow people to stay in our shelter if they're under the influence. If they start becoming aggressive or threatening or anything like that, then that's a different story, and then we'll ask them to leave. At the SOS site, in the rules, it actually says no alcohol or drug use on-site. That was one of the lessons learned. It's hard to enforce that when you don't have staff there monitoring it. And I think where we got to was that as long as you weren't sitting on the picnic table with a bottle of whatever, or smoking, or doing something for everyone to see if you were doing it maybe in your tent, we allowed it because, again, it was a safe place for them to stay instead of for them to be at a park or behind a dumpster or something like that. That would be something, I think, that as another SOS gets restarted, that would be something that would be looked at a little bit closer, like how do we manage that?
But we will still have this gap in terms of how we can help those folks that are actively using, I would assume, with only that six-month limit.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. Yeah.
I think we are really just kind of taking baby steps because it is, it can be a hot question or a hot topic. And so just even starting behind DHS and getting that organized with rules and people visiting, even for the county and DHS, who were kind of the brunt of some of the consequences of having that camp behind them, it wasn't always pleasant, and there was a rough crowd there. But just saying, "Hey, just give us some time. Let us work out the kinks. Let's see what works, what doesn't work if we can make this happen or not. This is just temporary." So we got through that, and now we're to the next level. Okay, well, let's try the six months. We have some more kinks to work out. We have some more lessons to learn. And also a limit on staff ability. And that's another big picture is to do year-round. That's a lot more burden on the staff. There just isn't enough there for it right now. So we're building up to it. But for those lessons learned though, DeeDee, do kind of, in a question, because what we've learned, some things we've learned are that for this to be successful, we really need to have fencing. We need to have probably not just a tent, but probably like a shed, at least a three-wall shed with a roof. That seems for other communities that have SOSs to be real keys to making this to be a better experience for everybody. And both of those things kind of require, you know, more of a permanent nature because of the investments in it. But are there ways even for a six-month period that you could, could you see maybe a temporary fencing or, you know, other language in there to make it better? Because just having people walk in and out of a camp, it's dangerous for the people in there? And it's dangerous for, and it's not, shouldn't be a welcome space for anyone just to come in and out as they please?
That was a comment that we frequently heard from the people that were saying that the site is, there's not a lot of lighting there, and so people were walking, and they had no idea who they were. Sometimes it was law enforcement just kind of patrolling and making sure people were safe. But other times it was just people just maybe up to no good, just harassing the people that were staying there. So fencing and lighting. The tents that we used, they were about $250 tents. So they weren't like the $19 tent that you maybe get at a local store. But they did not hold up well when it comes to the wind. And so having some type of shelter, even if it's like a collapsible shelter that, you know, if we have to store it for six months, I don't know, we could maybe think that through. But it just would protect the tent. And then it also makes it really clear where the boundaries of that person is. Like, you know, everything you have needs to stay inside of the shelter. But I guess that's a conversation as we go further down the road. But yeah, that was definitely something that when we talked to other SOS sites, they actually had a more permanent-type fixture for tents. There was a tent inside of that permanent fixture, but it just helped with the wind and things, so.
Right. So I'm just, I guess I'm just kind of thinking forward for the next time around. I mean, we have kind of a basic ordinance. Some things were struck out that weren't reasonable. But we also want to make sure that whatever we do moving forward is reasonable and is a setup for best-case scenario success within reason. And so I guess my question is, do we need to consider adding in there some type of fencing, even if it's a six-month facility or a shed of some sort? And also another one would be making progressive plans required for an SOS. Because here it just says, oh, come up with, you know, submit a plan, but maybe we need to have. And a progressive plan is for whoever's staying there, they have to have a progressive plan on how they're going to move on in their life for betterment. And then the services that come. I mean, in the agreement, it talks a little about, you know, having services involved. But in past discussions, you know, just a handshake of services, will you be able to be here this many hours a week? Perhaps something, a little bit more teeth, like an MOU or something, or IGA might make it more effective. And so I'm wondering if those are some of those elements that were the learning points of our little experiment? If maybe we should put those into the ordinance itself so we make sure that we are set up for the best-case scenario success?
Yeah, those are great suggestions. I think my thought would be, and I'll obviously defer to all of you and to Ryan, but I know he had talked about putting that administrative policy and procedures together. I think that would be maybe the better place to put those things and not in the ordinance. We have no idea who that agency is that's going to maybe start the SOS. And so putting that the fencing is required and the permanent structure or semi-permanent structure is required may be a hindrance for that person or that agency or that church or whomever. So it seems like that would be a better place than the administrative policy and procedure and not in the ordinance, is my thought. Yeah.
That's a good thought. Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I would concur with that. And then while I'm talking, Councilman Hammack does have his hand up as well.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Something I'd like to say is that, you know, we're, in a way, we're dealing with the better part of this problem. We're dealing, we're really trying to establish procedures and actions for those that can be helped and want to be helped. But as in any group of people, we have people that are, you know, actively have chosen to do wrong or just have a problem with authority in general and resist all types of authority. And so I have a question for our attorney. And my question is, you know, something that I've heard is, the question that I've heard asked is, why can't we take the troublemakers and just put them on the bus to go, to leave somewhere outside of Fremont County?
There are a host of issues with that tact. There's a right to travel in the Constitution which you'd be limiting. There's a right to place which you'd be limiting. You'd be certainly infringing on some First Amendment rights. It would probably require a gluttony list to get all of the legal issues out there. But fair to say, that's not something that I would recommend.
Thank you for that. And the, you know, I think it's important to recognize that we do have laws and that the laws are designed to deal with the group of people that we might call troublemakers. And it's important for us as citizens to work where we can with our police department to help address those outliers that frankly can be rotten apples, that might spoil something really good that we're trying to do here. Thank you for that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack. Just kind of along those lines, as I know this is going to trigger a lot of conversations. You have real-life data. And to the point of like, we're dealing with humans and individuals. This isn't just a tribe. But you go through every, you know, each and every of these 148 people. You know their names, their phone numbers, their contact information, their unique challenges, and what they need to be better in their lives. Which is, which has been, seems like the secret sauce because before this started, there was well over 500 homeless people counted in Fremont County, most of those in Canyon City, down to 148. I mean, applause to you and your team for getting that far in just about two and a half years. It's incredible. And really excited for the movement that you're making. But this is still going to create a lot of conversation. So you know all this information about all these individuals. So when people make comments like, "We're giving so many benefits. People are coming in, in this case, all over the country," they may say, or "from all over the state." Where are these people coming from, and why are they here? And can you address that?
Yes, I can. I would say most of the people of the 148 are from Fremont County. There are those, though, that have come from other parts of the state. And there are those that have come from within the state. Those that are coming here generally are coming here because there is a family member that said, "Hey, come to Canyon City, and you can stay with me until you find a job." Not realizing that maybe the place that their family member was renting had a limited time limit where you could only stay there a couple of weeks or whatever. Or maybe there are some family dynamics that happened that allowed them where they had to leave. But I guess what I would also, so there are people come here for all kinds of reasons. But we also send people out for all places. I mean, we are buying bus tickets and sending, just today, I helped someone get to Alamosa. We send people to Pueblo. We send people to Denver. We've bought tickets to go to Texas, Louisiana. So, I mean, so people are coming here and people are leaving here. And, I mean, we're transient. People who are experiencing homelessness sometimes are more transient than the rest of the population. But, yeah, I hear that argument too. But the reality is, is that most of the people that we are helping are our neighbors. And we're talking about people who have been in our community for many, many, many years. And they are homeless for all kinds of reasons. Not just alcohol, not just mental health reasons. Some of them lost a job. Some of them had a medical issue. All kinds of reasons causes someone All kinds of reasons causes someone to become homeless. And the other thing is, is remember I told you we're trying to reach chronic and chronic homelessness? So that's a year or longer with a disabling condition. We have only 23 of those people out of that 148. Everyone else has been homeless for less than a year. So that's good news too, because it's the people who have been homeless the longest, the ones that have been homeless for several years, the ones that have been primarily staying at our SOS site. Those are the ones that have lots of challenges and there's lots of trauma involved in their life. And maybe mental health and drug addictions are part of that too, so.
Thank you, DeeDee. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a more technical line edit. In J Overnight Shelter, it actually references, so J4D, access to shower facilities, meaning such facilities must be located within 1,000 feet of the temporary shelter or safe outdoor space. And because it's in the overnight shelter section, I'm assuming that it should actually reference back to the overnight shelter as opposed to a completely separate temporary shelter or safe outdoor space.
Well, the shower facilities are actually in Loews and Fishes, probably in both.
But the overnight shelter portion?
Oh, that would be different, like if it was at a church facility.
Exactly. So I think that the temporary shelter, safe outdoor space is I, but what I'm talking about is actually in J, which is overnight shelter. So unless there's a reason from our attorneys why that, okay. So I just think that we may want to delete the last clause of J4D. And just while I have the microphone, thank you so much to all three of you actually for the work that you do with this population and the work that you do each and every day to make Canyon City a safer place to live and ensure that these individuals also have a safe place to live. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. So did we clarify, should that wording just be changed under the section that Councilmember Schmisher just referred to, J4D? Should that say overnight shelter instead of saying temporary shelter slash safe outdoor space? And then I have another question about the ordinance.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. My question about the ordinance is in reference to lines on both page one and page three. So on page one, under section 1I, if I'm reading that correctly, and then section four under that, there's a listing of whether it showers, potable drinking water, waste receptacles and so forth. So both there and then on page three, under the overnight shelter section J4. Is there a reason we don't list toilets? Is that covered somewhere else in our ordinances or should we add that to the list? See, we've got lots of neat stuff, hand washing stations, laundry service, but what about toilets?
They do have toilets on location.
It just seems like if we're going to require these other nice things, that maybe that would be something too.
So, yeah.
It's just not there, I don't think.
So, Austin, do you have any recommendations? I mean, it probably go hand in hand with the water.
Yeah, we can certainly add that.
And I had a question when it talked about tran, or access to medical and appointments. And I was wondering, for example, on page 2, 5J, a description of all medical-related services that will be provided at the site. I was wondering, because there, so things are provided at the site, for example, having, and this might be in the administration report of having like a picnic table or pavilion so they have a place to meet with their providers on site. But should we also have something about and/or transportation plans to get to appointments? Because some of them might need to get to their veterans' appointments or get to places and transportation is a barrier to that. I don't know if that should be in the administration?
Administrative policy.
Policy as well? Are there any other questions or suggestions for the ordinance itself?
I would say those things we can put into the administrative policies.
So if we do, when we, there is a motion made, there, looks like there needs to be two amendments. One is to add at least access to portable potties or restroom facilities. And the other one, was that one from you?
J4D.
J4D, and that was being deleted?
Change.
Okay. Councilmember Tracy?
I did find that I had one more question, just for clarification. On page four of the proposed ordinance, about two-thirds of the way down, it talks about in district zoned as residential or commercial. And yet, I think back in the summary, long ago, when we first started with the summary, I think it only said general, commercial or light industrial. But I may just not be understanding, are, one of these is the SOS space in certain zone districts and the overnight shelter in a different zone district? I'm just not clear.
So the SOS would only be allowed in general, commercial and industrial. The overnight shelters, it's possible because I think the, you know, who we expect to be permitees for that are probably religious facilities. And we do have religious facilities in residential areas. That, of course, is up to council if you want to make that amendment.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I just have one additional comment and then I'm happy to make a motion if no one else has additional questions or comments. And that's, you know, I take your point that we want to make sure that we're doing this in baby steps and that we want to make sure that we kind of are learning our lessons and ensuring that they're incorporated in. And I really appreciate the ingenuity and the innovativeness of Lovesome Fishes and Sol Vista and our police department of figuring this out and trying to move forward on a way that is both safe for our community and also provides this kind of opportunity for individuals experiencing homelessness. I do hope that this is not just a one and done and that we do continue to look at, you know, if this does work on this temporary basis, that we do continue to look at what are ways that we can make it more permanent? Because this is obviously a year-round challenge in our community and we do need a year-round solution. I know that it's a really nuanced and complicated issue and that there are a lot of different categories of people and a lot of different people who fall into this category as Mayor Protem Hammack mentioned and as my fellow councilmember Stein mentioned. So I just, I really do hope that we can continue looking at some of those more nuanced, longer-term solutions as well.
Just before you make the motion, just as a clarification, where the SOS was this last winter? It was in a city right-of-way, like literally in a street. And so that's not a possibility for that location to be permanent. So we actually don't have a permanent place or possibility of a home for it, especially where we want it to be close to Loews and Fishes, close to the police department, close to Sol Vista, close to UCOG and the DHS. There isn't, we don't have that right now. And so that's part of that process of getting there. So even getting permanent fencing, where there's now, that's not even a possibility because you can't put permanent fencing in the city right-of-way. So yeah, we're working, hoping to find more solutions. All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and get that motion.
Sure. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a bill for ordinance number nine, series of 2022, with the amendment in section 1I4A, amending that to say potable drinking water and restroom facilities within 1,000 feet of the site. The same amendment to J4A, potable drinking water and access to restroom facilities on site. And J4D, changing access to shower facilities, meaning such facilities must be located within 1,000 feet of the overnight shelter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Schmisher's comments and say I do definitely agree with this not being a one and done. But I think that at the same time, this is an ever-changing situation. So we don't really have a choice but to continue to look at the challenges that we as council, public safety and our agency helpers, it's going to take all of us. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight, DeeDee. And John, we really appreciate it. And to John Schick as you as well, you've been a partner in this SOS from the beginning and appreciate your role in the public safety part of it as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And just to, I wanted to emphasize and hope maybe, John, you can kind of do some backup on this. Just the significance of having people in one location instead of all over town, that there's a one-stop shop of, here we go, this is the place we go. And so you're there several times a day or every single day and you get to see everyone there at one place.
Well, that's a great question, Madam Mayor. And I was anticipating that question. I had some look at some numbers. Regretfully, dispatch, as they receive calls for service, didn't discern between our safe open spaces and DHS. Going through the list, I suspect many of those calls were probably related to the SOS facility, but most of those were our patrol watches. I can't tell you exactly what the calls for service were at the safe open spaces facility, but I think I can give you an honest opinion that before the fences were up, before the tents were up, before DeeDee and her staff and all the resource agencies were visiting those folks on a routine basis, we spent far more time over there than we are now.
Is there anything else you'd like to add about this ordinance?
I like to reflect on the 14 lives that she changed. I think that's remarkable. I haven't been around as long as everyone else here. For that number to come down from 500 to 148 speaks volumes. And I think we're heading in the right direction. I think we need to keep fishing.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate that. Ryan Stevens?
You may be getting to it, but I just want to make sure that you ask for any public comment before you close the public hearing.
Thank you. I always appreciate reminders. Which will be a really great time now. Is there any public comment of anyone who'd like to address council on this matter? If not, I will close this public hearing. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call a vote, please. Councilwoman Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilwoman B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stein?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Congratulations. And those baby steps, keep going forward. Although Built for Zero, you weren't taking baby steps. You were just leaps and bounds in solving homelessness and looking forward to the next celebration. The celebration to end veteran homelessness was awesome. Ending chronic homelessness would just be a whole nother level of awesomeness. So thank you. Okay, we do need to move on. We have item 11A. Excuse me. Introduction and first reading by title only, ordinance eight, series of 2022, entitled "An Addendum to the Master Lease Agreement with U.S. Bancorp, Bancorp Government Leasing and Financial for New Police Vehicles." You are up and ready to go, Tammy. Let's do it.
All right. So in the 2022 budget, city council did approve the purchase for new police vehicles. This addendum to the master lease agreement is the financing that will be required to complete that purchase. And finance department has worked with U.S. Bancorp leasing, government leasing and financing to modify the master lease schedule to include the additional police vehicles. These vehicles have already been ordered. Council approved it earlier in the year. They are anticipated to arrive late second quarter, early third quarter. So they're actually going to be here sooner than our previous ones. So that's, so that's great. And this just allows us to have the means to go ahead and get those paid for. So you have an ordinance to modify our lease.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Tracy?
My button doesn't seem to be working very well anymore, so.
Will you beat the race with Councilmember Schmisher?
I'm glad, when we get the upgrade, I'll be happy. Anyway, I did have, just, I wanted to be sure I understood with all that great information that was in our packet. It looks like on the page that talks about the payment schedule, it's 20 payments and it's through April of 2027. So that's the payout period for this amendment to the master lease, if I'm saying it correctly. And then I, just doing simple math, which is often a mistake, but just looking at the interest portion of the total, in that total bottom line there, it looks like it's almost 8%. Does that sound right or am I applying the wrong math here?
The interest is supposed to be 3.22%.
Okay.
So, I know when I was looking back at that for the total interest paid, where it shows it's like $20,000 for the $240,000 principal, it does seem kind of high. I can have them rerun that number to make sure.
And I'm not sure my calculation is the appropriate way to go. But if you just, you know, divide that, you know, those total numbers, you come up with almost 8%, which seemed a little stiff if that's accurate, so.
Right. No, it's supposed to be 3.22% is what the interest rate is supposed to be.
All right. Is that all that you have, Councilmember Tracy?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is actually for the city attorney. I was wondering if you could explain why we have to do this via ordinance?
Sorry, just give me a moment here. I'm actually not sure why you would have to do it by ordinance. I could follow up with you on that. My hunch is that you probably actually don't.
We've been instructed previously by Catherine.
Okay. So I can follow up with her on what the reasoning is for that?
Is it because we're going into a debt?
And I think that is what it is. And it has, I think it relates to Colorado state law.
Okay.
That was, it was done in the last, I forgot how many, how many years.
Okay.
That would be great. Thank you. If there's no further questions, I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number eight, series of 2022.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one thing. I know when we first approved this, we had talked about local dealerships still having access to submitting bids for that. Is that still on the table?
It is. The challenge that we're having right now with local dealerships is their ability to get the number of vehicles that we need and.
That's what I figured. I just wanted to address that publicly. And I'm looking forward to seeing the new fancy vehicles. Thank you.
I'll call a vote. Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor Protem Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tammy. And congratulations, Chief Schick. Yeah. We definitely want to make sure that if somebody calls 911, even if it's below zero, those vehicles can get to where they need to go. All right. Item 11B, introduction and first reading by title only, ordinance 10, series of 2022, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Setting the Compensation of the City Administrator." Ryan, this seems awkward. Are you supposed to get?
I think the attorneys in the past have done this one. I don't know.
Turn it over to you, Austin, if you wish. While we're waiting for Austin, I will say that we have met as a city council. We gave Ryan, just for the benefit of the public, for his contract last year, or actually the last six months, a list of expectations. last six months, a list of expectations we had from him, very specific expectations we had for him in conducting his job and results that we wanted to see, and his compensation is based on his ability to achieve, or in some cases, maybe not achieve, some of those items, and also includes the cost of living raise, which has brought it up to $139,322.79. Isn't that nice? The whole world gets to know your salary.
As public service, ma'am.
Transparency.
It sounds like you've done the report.
Yeah, well, Austin, you have to fill in on that.
I don't know that Austin has anything else to add.
No, I'm happy to read this off, though, for you, if you like.
If it's, if we need to, yeah.
Don't need to.
Okay. Then let's keep the meeting going. We'll say also, for the benefit of the public, that we are going to be doing the new contract for Ryan with his new expectations for this future year and his salary. So with that, I'd like to take a motion to approve this ordinance. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I move to approve ordinance number 10, series of 2022, on first reading.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you for your public service to Canyon City. It's been excellent work. We really appreciate it. We are now on item C, second reading and adoption by title only, ordinance four, series of 2022, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Title 10 of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Chapter 10.10 Concerning UTVs." Ryan Stevens?
Yes. So staff is asking for this item to be tabled. We've got a request for June 6th. Part of the reason for tabling that is we were waiting for research and a staff attorney memo, and we received that last week, and we need time to digest all of that information. And I also think we need to reconvene the stakeholders to talk through some of those, some of the discussion that we had at the last stakeholder meeting. So so I, from my standpoint, I think we need to go to that June 6th date, and I know there may be some questions or some additional comments, so go ahead and open that up to you, Madam Mayor.
I think that it probably would be. Based on the nodding of heads that I saw appropriate, if there's this much to digest for staff on the legalities of the recommendations that were made by the stakeholder meeting, that it would be very appropriate for that to go back to that stakeholder meeting for them to turn, take a turn and digest as well before they make a recommendation to counsel. Councilmember Schmisher?
I was just hoping to get a little bit of clarity. When you say reconvening the stakeholders, do you mean the original group with the two council members, or do you mean the broader public forum?
Bro, oh, broader.
I was thinking the smaller group, but obviously, we did not have anybody from, I don't necessarily want to refer to them as the opposition, but the other side of the, of the equation in those meetings, and probably want to have some additional input as part of those conversations.
I think it may make sense to just, given the, I think what we saw from the public, how well-attended the public meeting was, to make sure that they're really well-advertised, that people know that they're happening, and so that they can show up if they want to, so that we really do have an opportunity to hear from all interested parties.
The full picture, yeah. Any other? Oh, let's see. So Amy, is that your...
I do have additional, but I'm happy to, happy to go or happy to wait.
Go ahead and go.
Okay. My other questions, I was wondering, Chief Schick, if you had had an opportunity to reach out to the Fremont County Sheriff's Office, if they had any concerns about the impact that this may have if the city does pass this with it, for the county law enforcement perspective?
Yes, ma'am. I had an opportunity, I believe it was March 22nd, we had that community meeting, and I had a conversation via text with the undersheriff, Derek Irvine, and I reported to the community that night because there were some Fremont County residents in the, in the crowd that were curious how the county would sit with that, with that particular issue, and he reported to me that the county had shot it down two years earlier. Their position hadn't changed, that they were only allowing UTVs to agricultural purposes, and they, he cited that one of the biggest concerns was the cost to the county on maintenance of dirt roads throughout the county. He said that the bridges and, the bridges and streets, did some research in other communities, and that was, that was one of the biggest concerns that they had.
Did they have any concerns about the impact on the county should the city permit it?
Didn't share anything, no, ma'am.
I know that in our city-city-county meeting that we had last week, the county commissioners did note that they did have some concerns about the potential impact on the county were the city to pass this kind of ordinance.
And, and you know, and I think the main part, and they see it, and it's not gonna, it happens now, and we all know that, in the county and the city, and especially in the Lincoln Park area, just because of the nature of the county line, and it's, the majority of that is in the county, you know, county, very little is in the city, but there's still, it crosses up there, and everybody acknowledges it, but there's also people with a lot of fields who go back between field and field and field, and that's a tough deal, and that's tough to stop them as well.
You know, that is interesting about the agricultural use of UTVs in the county, because there are agricultural uses in the city limits as well, it might be a part of that conversation when you go back to the stakeholders. Depending on where this moves forward, because I mean, just seeing Brady's Nursery itself, they, I had a conversation with that owner, and they're like, yeah, if this passes, this could actually really help my nursery in transporting between my, my shop and my nursery. So there's some things to think about that. Councilmember Tracy?
I guess my main question is, are, if we are going to have another broader public meeting with stakeholders, will that be scheduled as a special council meeting as that other one was? And we should maybe talk about dates if we're going to do that. Now, that allowed then, you know, as many council members to attend as were interested.
All right, get out your calendars.
Maybe we could do it the same time we do the interview. No, I'm kidding.
Can I ask how long you think staff is going to need to digest some of this before we start looking at dates?
Well, obviously, if we were looking to table to June 6th, but I was thinking a smaller meeting, so...
Right, no, correct.
We'll probably want to table it later than that, if that's going to be the case.
And I'll be honest, this passed on first reading, and, and I know we're all looking at it because it got put on hold on the second reading, but I don't want to continue this, you know, either, I don't want to continue it on. I think it's something that we need to either, it either gets pushed and passed, or it doesn't get passed, but I don't think we need to push it all the way down the road to the end of the summer, or even the middle of the summer. I think this is something that, it's been on the table now. You know, the second reading was April 18th, or, you know, this is what this is, but that goes back to February 21st is when that got tabled.
And we have the...
I don't want to make this a year-long thing already.
We have a report from our attorneys. I don't know if it takes seven weeks to really get through that. I think that we probably do need to keep the ball rolling.
Yeah. What I would suggest, rather than having that larger meeting, I know that some of the stakeholders on both sides of the issue, you know, they've been trying to coordinate a meeting between themselves. I don't know that we need to go back to a larger stakeholder meeting and maybe convene with, with both of those groups and share some of the information that we have from the legal standpoint as far as what can be allowed and what can't be allowed, and amend the ordinance from there and bring that back on June 6th.
I can appreciate your reluctance to go to, back to the larger stakeholder meeting, but man, I feel like that would bite us in the butt if we did not make it available to the public to participate if they had that desire to do so.
Is it a, oh, sorry. Madam Mayor, if I...
Yes.
I just have a question. Is it, I know that our city administrator will be gone for some part of May. Is it a question about who would facilitate that meeting or how that would be done, and maybe we can just make a plan? Because my bias is bigger, too. Just let, you know, have it all discussed in one broad meeting again.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would pick a date where I was back and, you know, so that, again, look in the week of the May 23rd, and then packets are due the 27th. So that would be the reason for pushing it to the second meeting in June.
Okay, well, that makes a lot of sense.
Which is second meeting is the 20th?
Second meeting in June would be the 20th. That's correct.
So we're going to table till June 20th?
But have a stakeholders' meeting the week of the 23rd?
Correct.
Councilmember Schmisher?
I guess just a couple of, couple of thoughts. I'm also really disappointed. I was really expecting us to be able to do this tonight. People have been talking about this and waiting for this for a long time, and it doesn't seem fair, and I'm really disappointed that our attorneys didn't get us this information sooner. We had that public meeting March 22nd. I'm not sure why it took, what would that be, three weeks to get us the answers to those questions, so I'm disappointed. Second off, I absolutely believe in as much transparency, and anybody who wants to come to a meeting and be heard should be able to, but I also know that if you have a room full of 50 people, the likelihood that you will actually be able to do line edits to an ordinance is probably not super, probably not super high. So I also definitely understand where Administrator Stevens is coming from in trying to balance those two desires, because I do think that it really depends on what we're trying to accomplish. And I think on the one hand, we definitely want to be transparent, and we want everyone to hear what, you know, the answers to their questions and kind of what we asked our attorneys to look into, but on the other hand, I don't know that necessarily everybody who would want to hear the answers to those questions would really want to sit down with, you know, with a computer and do, do an hour or two's worth of track changes to really get the ordinance to a place where we want it to be. So I definitely understand that balancing act, and I'm wondering if we're trying to accomplish two different things all within the same meeting, and if that may not actually serve us that well.
And just to carry on on that, and I totally agree with that, and I think if we do carry another stakeholder meeting, we've been to one. I think both stakes will probably be saying, hey, you need to come to this, you need to come and talk to this, you need to back this. It's, it's not going to be so much the people who are really trying to be, it's going to be drawing this to try to say, hey, come, come push this, come push this. And I agree with you. I think it could be, I think with Ryan, I do believe that another meeting is, I don't think it's the right thing right now. We've put, we've laid it out there. We can, we can meet, but, you know, I want to see this thing get resolved, too. It's been on the book for too long.
Ryan, how much time do you need if you were to meet with a smaller group just to hash out the fine details? And I guess the, the people will come to the bigger meeting where it's actually passed on the second ordinance.
Correct. So I could try and get something lined up with the smaller committee within the next week.
Then the next week, and that would enable us to pass this on June 6th, or do you think we could go sooner?
That's a good question, Madam Mayor. I, I think some of that depends on what comes out of that committee meeting.
Okay, so let's table to June 6th for now. And we do have somebody in the audience who's been here for a very long meeting on this topic. Would you like to have an opportunity to address counsel? Okay. Councilmember Smith, just...
I just had one question. The smaller group of citizens that initially approached this would definitely come here, computer in hand, to do line edits on an ordinance. They want to make sure that this is going to work across the board. They want to make sure that they are in compliance with the ordinance. So yes, 100%, I can say that the initial citizen group that came would be 100% on board with coming in to doing line edits on the ordinance. Thank you.
I would say with a caveat, with inviting the other side to be a part of that line.
Yeah, and I have received line edits from the others, the other side as well, so I would invite the, you know, a couple of members that were working on that to, to attend.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to volunteer to be on that meeting because our other council person who was part of that has stepped down, and I'd like to volunteer to join Councilman Smith to preside at that meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennehy. Appreciate that. Councilmember Tracy?
As we've talked through this... Sorry. As we've talked through this, are we talking about a publicized special council meeting, or are we only talking about a meeting where there would be up to two council members there? Because my question kind of related to our earlier discussion about having a more open meeting.
Yeah, so I think we've been kind of around the loop of, maybe at this point, it sounds like it might be better to have a smaller group that actually can have an effective meeting for doing the line item edits, but then have, obviously, a lot of advertisement and invitation for everyone to come and participate in the June 6th meeting in a public hearing with the entire city council present.
Well, I would just suggest that we're going to do it that way, that we have the meeting within the next week or so, or before Ryan leaves, and, you know, whoever can make it, make it, because otherwise it gets pushed out again. And I still do have that question. I think someone else already answered, asked, and that is, could it be sooner than June 6th? I guess we should just leave that option open.
So if we table it till June 6th, but if you feel like you got out of that meeting and it was productive and you have a good product, should we, I mean, I guess that goes to the attorney, too. Should we table it to an earlier date, just in case it's ready earlier?
So, Austin, if they, if they table it to a date certain, can they change it later if it's ready earlier, or it has to go to that date?
No, they can change that as long as adequate notice is given. So as long as the notice provisions in the code are still met, and you have the time to give the notice provisions, then you can push it up.
I would feel, personally, as much as I want this to pass as soon as possible, I would feel more comfortable with the June 6th date, just because I want to make sure that everybody has their day in the sun here to say what they need to say.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, and also based on those edits, that the attorneys are probably going to need some more time to review that next product. So let's just, we don't need to be in a rush. Let's take care of business, but I think we're, we're in that sweet spot with June 6th. With that said, can we take a motion? Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I move to table ordinance four, series of 2022, to June 6th.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Nay.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, it passes. It has been tabled to June 6th. There will be another meeting to go over those potential changes, but definitely want the public to know that June 6th is the day to come and show up in your numbers. It is time now to move to an executive session. Mayor Protem Hamrick, I don't know if you, if you still want to do the honors via Zoom to make that motion?
Madam Mayor, I suggest that someone present there that can more easily discern who is present for the, for the paperwork to make that motion.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that City Council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. Executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 2464024B concerning options for providing electric power to the city. concerning options for providing electric power to the city.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just glad I didn't have to read that.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay. We are going to an executive session.